Criminal order of what happened that day, and then we'll bring this gentleman up.
I threw the chair. On Sunday, February 5th at 1:55 PM, while Daniel was returning to work back over at A.J.M. Packing, he noticed smoke coming from a nearby home on Goddard Road. Daniel turned around and found the homeowner calling for help on the second-story window with large volume of smoke coming from the home. Daniel was able to force entry into the homeowner's garage, access a ladder, the homeowner's ladder, from the garage, and was able to use the ladder to help the homeowner escape the home prior to our arrival. So if it were not for Daniel's willingness to get involved by stepping up, gaining access to the ladder, placing the ladder at the window, the results might have been tragic for the homeowner. So today, we've been fortunate enough, we have Daniel here and we have the homeowners here, so Eric and Paul.
Invite him up?
Yeah. So we, on behalf of the Southgate Fire Department and the City of Southgate, would like to recognize Daniel for his actions and for just a job well done. Come on, right over here, Paul.
Right through. Hey, Mark, why don't you come up as public safety liaison?
What's Kitty's name? Jack?
He's a very nice cat.
Lucky cat.
Next, we have a presentation to Mark Farah.
Mark, you could have stayed up here. You know, we have a letter in the packet today acknowledging the fact, I know Mark mentioned it last meeting, that he will be leaving council the end of this month, on the 28th, and we wanted to give him a special presentation. And, you know, we've talked over the last several weeks in terms of his reason for leaving and some of the circumstances, but one of the things he's dealing with right now is going through all the belongings over 25 years in the home, and, you know, he and his wife June are going through that. So we talked a lot about clutter. So Mark, over his 25 years of service to the Southgate Police Department, received a lot of awards, a lot of acknowledgements, a lot of things to hang on the wall. So we went a little bit differently this time to acknowledge his service here on council. So we put his acknowledgement on a beer mug. Something that we think that he acknowledged we would accept, and something that he would actually use instead of trying to hang on another wall. So with that, I'd like to read what's on the mug, which is presented to Mark Farah, "For nine years of service as a member of the Southgate City Council, November 19th, 2013, to February 28th, 2023, on behalf of the residents, employees, and elected officials of the City of Southgate." I want to congratulate and you thank him. Come on now, you're part of the field too.
Darn it.
Darn it. The last time you have to take a picture, she has just tolerated this for me.
Next up is the official's reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before I start that, you know, I do want to also acknowledge the fact there's other members of the Farah family here, and then someone who also has made a real difference in the city, has to the city is Barb Farah, former councilman, council president, and state representative. So appreciate you being here, as well as their other family members to join in this final regular meeting for Mark. So thank you again. Mayor Chair, it's not on the agenda tonight, but I wanted to add it as part of my official's report, and that is a proclamation as it relates to Black History Month. We did this last mid-February last year, and I will read it. So during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economy, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in 1926 of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association of Studies for African-American Life and History. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the City of Southgate continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contribution and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And whereas the City of Southgate is proud to honor the history and contribution of African-Americans in our community, throughout our state, and our nation. Therefore, in recognition of African-Americans, past and present, in our community and throughout the great nation, I, Joseph Cuspa, Mayor of the City of Southgate, do by here proclaim February to be Black History Month, and encourage all residents and citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture, and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. And as far as official's reports, I'm, I know it's, I've got several things going on today, but I want to eliminate mine to just, or to just one item, and that is something very significant that happened a week or so ago for our city, and it's official. On February 7th, the Southgate Police Department was named a State of Michigan Law Enforcement Agency. This designation is only given to police departments throughout the state that meet the highest standards in transparency, policy adherence, and proper policing. This recognition is shared by only 57 other police departments in the entire state, which places Southgate in the top 10% of Michigan law enforcement agencies. Congratulations to all of our officers for being a part of this three-year process and working together to gain this extraordinary status. Special recognition is also in order for our Public Safety Director, Joe Marsh, Police Chief Mark Midlers, and Lieutenant Robert Lakowski for coordinating this monumental effort. Thank you for your continued commitment to the safety of our residents, and for bringing such positive recognition to our community and the men and women of the Southgate Police Department. We can now put this accredited sticker on police assets, so we're really, really, really proud of that. So it's something to be proud of, not only as elected officials, but as a community too, that we're doing the right thing when it comes to policing our community. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
No report, thank you.
Mr. Treasurer?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Roush?
Just one thing, because I always get to be first, so I get to be the first to congratulate you, Mark, on your next venture, wherever that takes you. I think that on behalf of the city, you did a great job servants on the council. I was just sitting here, when I talked to your sisters and stuff a lot, how many things our families probably have crossed from Barb and your sister DeeDee and your wife and my brother Mark, I was like, the Farah and the Roush families have crossed many times. So congratulations on your next venture, and good luck for whatever you and your wife choose to do. But thank you for, on behalf of the City of Southgate.
Thank you. Councilman Graziani?
Since we last met, both the BZA and Dangerous Buildings Hearings Board held some hearings, the Dangerous Buildings Board met last week on Tuesday to discuss the future of a property situated behind what is now known as the mega outlet on Trenton and Eureka. And that property, as we know, sustained some significant fire damage within, I think it's north of a year now, and that damage put the property out of compliance of the city code. The property owners and legal counsel were invited and gave a notice on the hearing, but nobody attended on their behalf. The board ultimately voted to demolish the building. It's my understanding that the council's going to be tasked, or a public hearing's going to be held on March 1st, 2023, to discuss and affirm the recommendation of the Dangerous Buildings Board. From there, if the council approves the demolition, the property owners have 21 days to dispute such a decision. And it's also worth noting that the prospective demolition's going to be funded through the property's insurance coverage. As to the BZA, not much going on over there. The BZA revisited a dimensional variance request made by certain homeowners in the Churchill neighborhood. That request was ultimately denied by the board due to the facts presented and in accordance with the Michigan zoning enabling act and the city code. That decision, at least in my opinion, isn't pertinent to the residents at large, which is why I won't go into detail. There should be some minutes, I don't know if they're published yet, with further details on the city's website. The next BZA hearing will take place on Monday, March 13th, at 5:30 in these chambers. And that's it from me.
Okay. First, I also want to congratulate Mark for his many years on council, and thank you so much for your service. Moving on, the school board met, business is pretty much as usual. They also did some edits to their board policy, and they discussed a new high school digital scoreboard. Also, finally, I just want to let the audience and council know that I will be holding a moment of silence for the victims from Michigan State University over the tragedy these past few days. So that will happen during the regular meetings. Just wanted to put that out there. Councilman Clovis?
Thank you, Chairperson. I want to congratulate Mark also on his retirement, well-earned, served his tour of duty of nine years on the council, 25 years as a police officer for the City of Southgate. I've never seen Mark look so happy tonight talking with him. I asked him, you know, what are you going to do on your first Monday, excuse me, first Wednesday and third Wednesday of the month now? And he's going to relax and not rush dinner and rush to get changed to get here. So you certainly have earned it. Your family's always served our city. Very proud, starting with your mother and father. And they were great people, are great people, and dedicated to serve as your family. So congratulations again, and enjoy yourself.
Councilman Farah?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First, I'd like to just say thank you to the voters in the City of Southgate for their support and their trust in putting me on this council for several terms. I'm very proud to have continued on a very long history of family, family history of public service. Barb, who's been mentioned, my parents, my brother Michael, 25 years on the fire department. So it's been my honor. It's been a great honor to serve this community. It's been a great honor to serve with everybody here. As far as official's reports, recreation did not meet this month, but the spring projects with the recreation millage are all moving forward. Public safety did meet today. Fire department had a pretty busy month, last month, four fires, one of them that was mentioned today. And we do have a new firefighter starting on Monday. The police department accreditation was discussed, and something interesting and something new to me is we actually have two officers that are going to be language certi, they're taking language certification tests to become certified translators in Spanish and one in Punjabi, which I had to ask the question, that's Indian. But for the first time in our department's history, we'll have certified translators on our department as well. And our new little puppy, Titan, I guess graduated four weeks of its first obedience school. So that's something new in law enforcement as well. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman George?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mark, congratulations, and you will be missed. You've provided invaluable information to the council, and we will really miss you. Concerning the library, Hoopla is offering unlimited borrows for the month of February. You can check out as many books, movies, et cetera, as you like. Normally, you are only allowed 10 borrows for the month, but this month, it's unlimited. And the next teen advisory board meeting will be held Wednesday, February 22nd, at 6:00 PM at the library. On a personal note, please continue to pray for the MSU students and their families. My grandson is a student there, and many, many of them are traumatized and will need time to recover from this horrific event. I know Southgate has many students attending Michigan State, so please provide what comfort and support you can to them and their families. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mark, do you want to discuss the agenda items?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. Today, we are requesting a closed session regarding two topics. First is the TA for the command union officers, and second is for the lawsuit Whittaker versus Southgate. Are there any questions from council regarding the closed session? Moving on to Communications A, the first item on the agenda is a request to authorize the TA for the command officers. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, the next item is a request to waive the bid and purchase power-time scheduling software for the police department from Power DMS. The current system, Telestaff, is no longer serviced with updates or technical support, and is leading to technical issues for the police department. You have been provided with three quotes from companies that provide scheduling software for police departments. Power DMS provided a competitive quote, and they are already used by our public safety departments for document storage. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, moving on to the third item, or the next item. This is a request to waive the bid and purchase a LiveScan 500 Palm Scanner upgrade from ID Network's Identification Technologies. The police department will be reimbursed in full for the cost of this purchase through a Michigan State Police grant. Federal forfeiture funds will be used for the initial purchase. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, the fourth item is a request for reimbursement to police officers for police academy costs. In 2017, a successful cadet program was established, and policies were put in place to reimburse for police academy training for cadets should they remain with the department. The reimbursement is made, and five yearly payments paid out after each full year completed in the department. We currently have two cadet, two officers in the department who were formerly cadets in the city, with the city, and they completed their academy training. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, the fifth item under Communications A is a request to set a public hearing for the demolition of 16133 Eureka Road. On February 7th, the Dangerous Building Boards met, as Councilman Graziani discussed, to discuss the demolition of the property. The administration is requesting a public hearing be set for March, for the March 1st council meeting to discuss and affirm the Dangerous Building Board's recommendation. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, the final item under Communications A is the request for a barbed wire fence to be installed at Frito-Lay. Per ordinance 1298.14, barbed wire fences require approval of council. Building Director Tim Leach has reviewed the site and the application, and recommends approval. A motion regarding this item should be referenced, a motion regarding this item should reference Frito-Lay's address, 12862 Reek Road. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, we have one item under Communications B. It's a letter from Councilman Mark Farah regarding his resignation from city council. And I will just say that I have not been able to work with Mark as long as many of you, but it's been a pleasure for the time that I have. And I had the opportunity today in the mayor's office meeting with Mark, and he got to discuss a little bit of his time with the city as a police officer and some of his accomplishments there. So you certainly have a long history of benefiting the city and doing great things, and so you will certainly be missed, and we wish you all the best.
Madam Chairperson?
Councilman Clovis?
Since on the agenda, if we don't accept it, does he stay on the council?
Could set a precedent.
I sit next to him. Hold on, hold on.
We tried to pull off the stops, it didn't work.
All right, with that being the last item, we will reconvene at 7 o'clock.
Brandon, did you find him?
It still seems like it's... It still seems like that last minute.
It's always like the silence before the storm, right?
No storm.
No storm.
The storm's coming tomorrow.
The storm's coming tomorrow.
Although the storm is tomorrow.
It's a prediction.
Is there?
It's now seven o'clock.
Great, I hope.
February fifteenth, city council meeting will begin. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask everyone to remain standing for a moment of silence for the Michigan State University victims. Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Zemeckis excused. Councilman Caspa?
Here.
Councilman Graziani?
Present.
Councilman Clovis?
Present.
Councilman Farah?
Present.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Roush?
Here.
A motion is required to approve the work study session minutes dated February first, 2023.
Madam Chairperson.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion we approve the work study minutes dated February first, 2023.
Support.
Motion by Roush reported by George. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. A motion is required to approve the regular city council meeting minutes dated February first, 2023.
Madam Chairperson.
Councilman Clovis.
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve the regular city council meeting minutes dated February first, 2023.
Support.
Motion by Clovis, supported by Roush. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Now I need a motion to enter into closed session for the following items. Collective bargaining agreement for command officers and discussion regarding White Taker versus Southgate.
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion we enter into closed session.
Support.
Motion by Roush, supported by George. Roll call, vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Roush?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Farah?
Yes.
Councilman Clovis?
Yes.
Councilman Graziani?
Yep.
Councilman Caspa?
Yes. We will now enter into closed session.
Are we on? All right, I made a motion to close the closed session regarding collective bargaining agreement command officers and discussion regarding Wataker versus Southgate.
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion we close the closed session.
Supported by Roush, supported by George. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Roush?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Fera?
Yes.
Councilman Clovis?
Yes.
Councilman Graziani?
Yes.
Councilman Caspa? Yes, is now closed. There are no scheduled persons in the audience, there are no consideration of bids, and there's no scheduled hearings. The first item under Communications A is a memo from the Administrator regarding collective bargaining agreement for command officers. Madam Clerk.
As previously discussed at this evening's executive session, the Administration has presented the City Council with a tentative agreement with the Command Officers Association. The Administration believes that the adoption of this agreement is in the best interest of the city. Therefore, the Administration respectfully requests that the City Council authorize the Mayor and the City Clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Fera.
I move this council agree with the Administration, adopt the tentative agreement with the Command Officers Association, and authorize the Mayor and City Clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Support.
Motion by Fera, supported by Clovis. Any discussion? Any objection?
Madam Chairman, I just want to note that it's appropriate that Mark make the motion on this, but also the fact that he's been part of this process at all the council has been in terms of getting our collective bargaining agreement settled with this agreement, this last agreement. We'll have three, at least three, three and a half years before we'll have to enter into new contracts. So it's a very fulfilling night tonight, and appreciate council's concurrence on this.
Thank you. Second is a letter from the Mayor regarding purchase of Power Time scheduling software. Madam Clerk.
I have reviewed the above with the Director of Public Safety and concur with his recommendation to waive the bid procedure and award the purchase of Power Time scheduling software to Power DMS. The initial subscription cost is $1,106 for the period through June 30th, 2023, plus a one-time setup fee of $2,300 for total initial cost of $3,406. The annual price beginning in July 2023 will be $3,349.60 per year. Adequate funds are available for this purchase in the general fund. Your favorable consideration of this matter is greatly appreciated.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam Chairperson.
Councilman Clovis.
I make a motion, well, I cough, make a motion to waive the bid procedure and award the purchase of Power Time scheduling software to Power DMS of Orlando, Florida. The initial subscription cost is $1,006 for the period through June 30, 2023, plus a one-time setup fee of $2,300 for a total initial cost of $3,406. The annual price beginning July 23rd will be $3,349.60 per year.
Support.
Motion by Clovis, supported by Fera. Any discussion?
Excuse me.
Any objection? Motion carries. Third is a letter from the Mayor regarding purchase of LiveScan 500 Palm Scanner upgrade. Madam Clerk.
I have reviewed the above with the Director of Public Safety and concur with his recommendation to waive the bid procedure and award the purchase of a LiveScan 500 Palm Scanner upgrade to ID Network's identification technologies. The purchase price of the equipment and related supplies is $10,278. Adequate funds are available for this purchase through a grant secured by the Police Department through the state of Michigan. Your favorable consideration of this matter is greatly appreciated.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion we purchase, agree with the Administration in purchase of LiveScan 500 Palm Scanner upgrade to ID Network's identification technologies by the figures read by the clerk, and I also say we waive the bid.
Motion by Roush, supported by George. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Fourth is a letter from the Mayor regarding reimbursement to police officers for police academy costs, police cadet policy number 8-96. Madam Clerk.
I have reviewed the above with the Director of Public Safety and concur with his recommendation to approve reimbursement to current police officers for their police academy costs while Southgate police cadets. Southgate Police Cadet Policy 8-96, Section 9, Cadet to Police Officer Program allows reimbursement of tuition costs to cadets who successfully complete the police academy and transition to the police officer positions. This reimbursement shall occur over the next five, over the next consecutive five years of service. Adequate funds are available in the general fund for this reimbursement. Your favorable consideration of this matter is greatly appreciated.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Fera.
I move this council agree with the Director of Public Safety, recommend the, and approve the reimbursement to current police officers for their police academy costs while Southgate police cadets, consistent with policy 8-96, Section 9.
Support.
Motion by Fera, supported by George. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Fifth is a letter from the Administrator regarding request for public hearing for demolition of 16133 Eureka Road. Madam Clerk.
On February 7th, 2023, the Dangerous Buildings Board met to discuss 16133 Eureka Road. The Dangerous Building Board recommends to City Council that the property be demolished using the insurance.
Road, Southgate.
Support.
Motion by Clovis, supported by George. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Last is a memo from the Billing Director regarding approval for application for Great Lakes Fence Company. Madam Clerk.
Great Lakes Fence Company has submitted an application for an addition of three-strand barbed wire on the top of an existing six-foot-high fence at the location of 12862 Reek Road, known as Frito-Lay. Based on 1298.14C, which states, "No person shall place or maintain any barbed wire fencing or any strands of barbed wire along the line of or in any public street, alley, sidewalk, or other public place in the city, nor shall any person build or maintain any line fence composed wholly or partly of barbed wire." Based on this, the application must be denied. However, it also states in the same section, "This section may be waived upon application to City Council, and Council may, in its discretion, grant permission for the installation of strands of barbed wire upon the top of any fence surrounding non-residential property and not abutting residential property where Council deems such installation of barbed wire to be necessary for the protection of the improvements or goods contained within the area so fenced from theft, vandalism, injury, or other malicious mischief. Based on this and the location of the fence and the current state of vandalism in this area, the building official would recommend this application be approved."
What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam Chairperson.
Councilman Clovis.
Thank you. Based upon the vandalism that's been in the area of where Frito-Lay is located on Reek Road, I make the motion that we grant Frito-Lay at the property located at 12862 Reek Road, Southgate, Michigan, permission to install strands of barbed wire upon the top of the fence surrounding this non-residential property and that, or the code of 1298.14C not be enforced. Thank you.
Support.
Motion by Clovis, supported by Roush. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. One item under Communications B, a letter from Councilman Mark Fera regarding resignation from City Council. Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair.
Oh, did you want to read it?
You want me to read his letter, or just?
Does it have to be for the record, or can we just proceed and file?
No, it doesn't, just emotion.
I make a motion we receive and file.
I reluctantly make a motion to receive and file.
I'll say support.
The resignation of Mark Fera from the City Council.
Yeah, so, motion by Roush, supported by George. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. There are no ordinances. Is there any old business the council would like to discuss?
Is this new business? Or old business? No.
All right, seeing none, is there any new business the council would like to discuss?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Councilman Clovis.
I do want to identify somebody in our audience, and that being, and she's turning red already, a councilperson from our neighboring city of Lincoln Park. I believe councilperson Ross, R-O-S-S, do you mind coming up here so you can be on the, is that okay if she comes up?
Will that be under unscheduled persons in the audience?
Well, she's not coming up unscheduled, but whatever, you're the council president. At least I acknowledge her, and that'll be.
And then if you would, if you would like to speak, you can come up under unscheduled persons in the audience. Okay.
All right, thank you, councilperson.
And the other new business the council would like to discuss? Seeing none, we'll move on to unscheduled persons in the audience. If you'd like to come up and speak to the council, you'll have three minutes if you'd like just to state your name and address.
Make sure they heard three minutes instead of five.
Hi, Councilwoman Lillian Ross from the city of Lincoln Park. I don't want to make your meeting any longer than it already is. I just want to thank you for having me. It was a pleasure to watch you. I love the dynamics. And we're always asking in our meetings, what do the neighboring communities do on, you know, certain topics? So it's nice to come in here and see for myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
If there's any other unscheduled persons, please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address the council.
I'm not going to make the meeting longer than what it is now as well, but good evening. My name is Robert Plowski. I live at 12757 Chestnut here in Southgate, and I'm a member of the Wayne County Youth Commission, representing District 15, Joseph Palomera. A couple things I want to make note is our dedicated long servant of nine years of service and 25 years of service in the Police Department, Mark Fera. I'd like to send my best wishes to you and your family for all the tremendous work you've done over the years. You have been a dedicated public servant, an advocate person for this district and this city alone. One of the things that really makes note is the amount of service you put in our Police Department. Our Police Department wouldn't have been there without your service, and we wouldn't have made changes going forth. The one thing I was hoping to hear was a no, we could just keep you locked here out of your misery, but, no, I'm just kidding. But one thing I want to say most of all is the person that will be taking over your seat, a good friend of mine, Priscilla Ayers-Reese, is a dedicated person, definite advocate for this city, and I look forward to seeing the great work you put into this city once you take over. It has been a long ride, and we are seeing tremendous leadership here in Southgate, and I look forward to seeing the best from people leaving to people coming up on council. We have a lot of things going good here in this city, and it's going to take a lot of everybody to make their voices heard, but also make their points known. Southgate is here for economic development. Southgate is here for new families willing to come in and make their lives better, but also grow their family here as well. The last thing I'd like to make note is just express my deepest condolences for the MSU students. Majority of the students I know and majority of the students that will be graduating this year have already taken on scholarships at MSU, so definitely keep them in your prayers, but also MSU is a great campus, and it's sad to see a tragedy, but it's also a time to call for action here, not just in Michigan, but here in Southgate as well for our districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Are there any other people in the audience that would like to address council? Seeing none, we move on to claims and accounts. Councilman Graziani.
I move this council approve warrant 1467 in amounts of $5,035,074.21.
Support.
Motion by Graziani, supported by Roush. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. Motion by Fera, supported by Clovis. We are adjourned.
Nice job, Mr. Mayor.